Okay, good evening ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience. We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of May 21st, 2019 is now called to order. The time is 6:06. And at this time we request that all electronic devices be put in silent mode. Also, we ask that you refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations that we will have soon, portion of the meeting. The agenda can also be found at the district's website, www.lee schools.net. Navigate to the leadership tab and choose school board. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest potential, and the district vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, three recognitions, public comment, consent action items, which include two executive services, six academic services, six business services, three human resources, and six under operations, as well as four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? So, okay. Ms. Giovinelli, and seconded, oh, excuse me. I wanted to say Ms. Vaughn, yeah. I'm looking at something wrong. Okay, and seconded by Ms. Fisher. And it's been moved and seconded, please record your vote. And it passes, the motion passes 7-0. Ms. Jordan will deliver the invocation, after which Ms. Vaughn will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fearness, bright thoughts and speech, impart our supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
The cadet presenting the national colors tonight will be introduced by Army Lieutenant Colonel Donald Barnett, senior army instructor for the Mariner High School Leadership Academy. Lieutenant Colonel Barnett served for over 24 years in the Army as an artillery officer with numerous domestic and overseas assignments. The Mariner High School JROTC has been selected to pilot test a new web-based curriculum program for the Army in preparation for worldwide fielding in two years. This is Lieutenant Colonel Barnett's 11th year as a JROTC instructor in the district. And Lieutenant Colonel Barnett, thank you for your service.
The national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight are presented by Cadet Colonel Sarah Garriga of the Mariner Triton Brigade. Cadet Garriga maintains a 4.37 GPA and is an active member of the JROTC. She has been selected as the Triton Brigade Commander for school year 2019-2020. Cadet Garriga is in the Scabbard and Blade JROTC Academic Society and the captain of the marksmanship team, where she competed in district and state championships. Outside of JROTC, Cadet Garriga is a member of the National Honor Society, Wreaths Across America, and the Principal's Advisory Council. Upon graduation, Cadet Garriga plans to attend college and study marine biology. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You may be seated.
Good evening. I'd like to invite Dr. Angela Pruitt, Chief Human Resources Officer, and Dr. Ann Cole, Principal at Calusa Middle School, to please join me at the lectern. The school district of Lee County is proud to announce the first annual formal recognition of New Teacher of the Year. School-based administrators were invited to nominate a first-year teacher that demonstrated superior ability to foster excellence in education and contributed to the continuous improvement of student learning, professional growth, and the school environment. Through a collaborative effort of the Teacher Association of Lee County, district administrators, and school staff, a committee was created to review the written nominations and select five finalists to be interviewed. The school board and the superintendent are pleased to recognize Mr. Daniel DeShazo as the 2019 New Teacher of the Year.
I thank the board for their time and the recognition. I thank the professional development Human Resources Department for initiating this award and taking the time to meet and interview with not just myself but other new teachers across the district. I thank my administration for nominating me for the award and being very supportive of me as a first-year teacher and the whole Calusa Middle School family. And last but certainly not least, I thank my family, my wife, my parents, my nephew, for just always being the greatest support I could ever ask for in my life. Thank you, everybody.
Getz, President of the Lee County Association of Professional Guest Teachers, to please join me at the lectern. The school district of Lee County is proud to announce the ninth annual formal recognition of outstanding guest teachers. I know Mr. Getz will tell you they are all outstanding, and I just want to say thank you to Mr. Getz for all of his work to help our guest teachers join our teaching family successfully.
Thank you. District teachers and school-based administrators were invited to nominate guest teachers they recognized as having an outstanding commitment to students, quality instruction, and creativity and delivery of that instruction. These guest teachers have also built a positive rapport with students, staff, and administration, and demonstrate knowledge of school rules and guidelines even when responding to emergency situations. Through a collaborative effort of the Lee County Association of Professional Guest Teachers, district administrators, and teachers, a committee was created to review hundreds of nominations and choose an outstanding guest teacher from each level. The school district and superintendent are pleased to recognize the following 2019 Guest Teachers of the Year. Elementary, Ms. Frances DePalma. She's not here. Oh, okay. She's being a mother of the bride. Middle School, Ms. Laurie Castellano.
Get up, friends and family, come on down. Principal, anybody who's here to support, get a picture. That is her, isn't it?
I would like to invite Ms. Angela Mates, a teacher at South Fort Myers High School and Region HOSA Advisor, to please join me at the lecture. HOSA Future Health Professionals, formerly known as Health Occupations Students of America, is an international student organization whose mission is to promote career opportunities to health care and to enhance the delivery of quality health care to all people. HOSA provides a unique program of leadership development, motivation, and recognition exclusively for middle, secondary, and post-secondary and collegiate students enrolled in health science education programs. At the recent state competition, Benita Springs Middle for the Arts, Benita Springs High, Estero High, and Fort Myers High, Ida Baker High, and South Fort Myers High had multiple winners in the secondary division, as well as Cape Coral Technical and Fort Myers Technical College in the post-secondary division. All the medal winners will be representing the state of Florida in the HOSA International Leadership Conference, which will be in Dallas, Texas in June. The board members and superintendent are pleased to recognize and congratulate the following gold, silver, and bronze medal winners. At this time, I'm going to ask Mrs. Mates to call the students forward to recognize, be recognized. Please hold your applause until all students have been announced. Principals and advisors, please come up as well. Here is your list, I'm going to trade with you.
All right, for our gold medal winners. First place in Courtesy Corps, Elizabeth Menendez from Benita Springs Middle Center for the Arts. In the category of Home Health Aid from Ida Baker High School, Elena M. In the category of Extemporaneous Writing from South Fort Myers High School, Seth Meninger. In the category of Clinical Nursing from Cape Coral Technical College, Shelby Elms. And in the category of Nursing Assistant from Fort Myers Technical College was Rachel For our silver medal winners, Interviewing Skills from Benita Springs High School, Mia In the category of Creative Problem Solving from Fort Myers High School, the team of Antonia In the category of Courtesy Corps from Benita Springs High School for second place, Sophia In the category of Pharmacology from Cape Coral Technical College, Katherine Dangues. And for the category of Medical Math from Fort Myers Technical College, Adam Smith. Moving on to our bronze medal winners. Third place, Medical Math from Fort Myers High School, Timothy Robertson. In the category of Medical Law and Ethics from Fort Myers High School, Cindy Marcy. In the category of Home Health Aid from Ida Baker High School, Shulyn Yao. In the category of Pharmacy Science from South Fort Myers High School, Bailey Rigdon. In the category of MRC Partnership, which is a medical reserve corps, the team of Kiara Profetto, Olivia Menendez, and Sunny Johnson from Benita Springs High School.
Okay, at this time, we're going to take a brief recess. So if anyone that needs to leave may do so, and then we'll start the regular meeting. Thank you for coming. And before we do, I have one thing to say. Today, a few of us went to Gateway Elementary School, and they had their leadership day. It was all about the seven habits. And one thing that really stuck in my mind that I wanted to mention before our meeting tonight is that they said synergy is not my ideas, it's not your ideas, but it's our ideas. So I'm hoping that we will be synergetic in this meeting as well. Our next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Bearman, please address the agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The school board offers the opportunity for those who may be unfamiliar with the public comment process to raise their hands and provide their names. The blue card is a public record identifying those who speak The blue card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. If you did not complete a blue public comment card, please proceed to Mrs. Johnson on your left after completing your comments so that we have a written record. Is there anybody who plans to speak or wishes to speak who has not yet filled out one of these blue comment cards? Seeing none, Madam Chair, we have nine comment cards. According to your rule, each commenter will be given up to three minutes, and I will man the timer. The first commenter is Louis Navarro.
Okay, thank you.
And can I have Ron Matthews, George Fox, John McMahon, and Randy Scott please line up at the microphones in that order? Mr. Navarro.
Yes. Good evening, Dr. Atkins, school board, Louis Navarro, 48 years resident, teacher, 46. Where are your red-nose bracelets? It's Red Nose Day Thursday. Raise your hands if you have one. You're wearing it? I'm wearing mine. Oh, shame on you. I bought you all for a donation to child poverty. I'll give it to Susan. I was at the Lee County Commission meeting, and I spoke about the half a cent sales tax and another unrelated issue concerning the Sheriff's Department. It was calm at that meeting. Maybe we'll have a calm meeting tonight. Bus suggestions to transportation, Mr. Lloyd, Mr. Perdue, and Dr. Atkins. I'm going to leave you this stuff here. Mr. Lloyd and Mr. Perdue said if I didn't bash them at the Cape Coral City Council meeting, they would look at it. Well, I don't know. I still think you need to cut out the school choice or reduce it 50%. I'm showing you how Duval County spends less money, and of course, they use a magnet program. And I've got the letter here, and I'll leave it with you. And for Mr. Lloyd, you've spent $38,000 on a sign. Why not some bus huts? That's what I want. And I know the people at the Rotary aren't too thrilled about that, but they ride around in a Lexus and give the kids a Kia. I've got some information from the bus huts, and they were willing to come up, cut 500, and I was going to put 500 up for a prototype as a donation in memory of Leila. I think we could afford it. We could keep the students safe, and we can take it out of that half a cent sales tax. I'm going to leave you the Handy Hut stuff here, too, and the pictures. The benches, they're chained to stop signs, and this, that, and the other. That's not going to work, and it's illegal, too. They say they're going to put concrete. Well, if you live in Cape Coral, I don't know how they're going to do that without getting a ticket. So I'm for bus huts, and I really want to push that idea, and we can use the half a cent sales tax for safety. The half a cent sales tax, I still feel it's fraud. I spoke with the commission. I'm going to speak with my councilman, Mr. Hammond. Shouldn't have been run like that. We're paying extra percent on the odd numbers. It was never on the ballot. The supervisor elections won't talk to me. And they didn't even, they put yes or no, and I know the board didn't do that. They did that. So I want to...
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Good afternoon, Board. Dr. Atkins. I first want to say thank you to Dr. Quisenberry. She gave me a call back and talked to me about some academics and things that were going over at Franklin Park. I really appreciate her calling me back. I want to thank Ms. Gittens and Ms. Vaughn. I had a chance to meet with you guys in between the last meeting and hope to get a chance to meet with the rest of the board members as well. I want to talk about two things. One, I want to talk about the class sizes. My goal for our county is that we really do a great job with getting our kids started, K through five. And there's no way to do that by increasing class sizes from 18 to whatever the plan is. I know it was from one to three to five kids. But if we're already struggling in classrooms now getting kids to get it, I don't think adding more kids will be the solution to that problem. Secondly, I want to talk about the three schools that are my major concerns, because most of the kids from my community attend these schools, Franklin Park, Ray V. Podoff, and Fort Myers Middle Academy. It's been a perpetual cycle for the last 10 years that I've been involved, that these schools continually are on the C-grade level of schools. And I know we're doing things. Ms. Quisenberry did tell me about a lot of great things that were taking place at Franklin Park, all of the support staff and different things that were in place. However, I'm still seeing the lack of parent involvement. And it doesn't matter what you guys do and how much we throw at things without getting the parents involved, we won't have success. And so I'm saying that's why we continue to have these schools struggle and stay at the grades that they are, because we haven't done a great job of getting parents involved. And then lastly, I would just like to say this. Not always is it a good thing to have the police policing themselves. And so when it comes to an investigative system for the school district, I think we should put something in place that it's an independent reporting system where people can report independently to somebody and have an investigation done outside of the district parameter, and then have that independent group come back and report to the district. Because at a certain point, an investigator that works for the district does have a little bias in the situation. And if they're talking about this at a national level, I just heard one of the candidates talk about it, having independent police boards, then I think we should also take that step to have an independent investigation board. So I thank you guys for your time, and I really do want to see us become a world-class district, and we're here to help. Thank you.
Mr. Fox.
Evening. It's been a while since I've been here, but wanted to come tonight after watching the hilarity from last time. Or I didn't actually watch it, but I heard about it, and I can only imagine. I've been to a few of them. I wanted to come first and foremost to tell Dr. Atkins to keep working at it. You're doing a fantastic job, and the stability and competence at the top is huge, and how this board cannot recognize that is beyond me. That being said, though, one thing I would like to see the board and the superintendent and everybody is self-initiative. It's a word, it gets said in many different ways, but it's not something that's made a part of the school's mantra, if you will. I don't know how to say it. Self-initiative. Nothing replaces self-initiative. There's no issue that this board can create, the superintendent can put in place, that replaces self-initiative. It's what we need to shoot for, it's what we need to aim for, it's what we need to expect out of everyone who deals in the school system, really in life in general, everywhere. Self-initiative is what makes the world go, and I don't see the board talking about that at all. And it's something, Gwen, that everybody can agree on. It's nod our heads. Do we all agree that self-initiative is a good thing? Betsy? Board members? All the way down the line? Uh-huh. I see Mary. I see definitely Kathleen. Definitely Chris. Definitely Debbie. Betsy? Self-initiative, is it a good thing? Yes, it is. Thank you. Good. Gwen, how about you?
I'm not supposed to...
Well, you can do whatever you'd like. It's okay. You can nod your head. Melissa?
I said yes.
Yes. So there we go, and I don't even have to ask Greg. Self-initiative is what the man's made of. So, you know, we can come together on that. You can disagree on how much Benita School cost and, you know, the masterful job that the superintendent did bringing that project together, which he did do a fantastic job. He overcame a lot of hurdles, and I still see that being brought up as something, shoot, it's done, and it's paid for by a half a cent sales tax. All right. So self-initiative, guys. How about let's all talk about that to the public and to the kids? And I don't think you'll get anybody to disagree with you. Okay? How's that? Okay? Thanks. You about to say something, Melissa? You're welcome to.
Oh, no.
Oh, okay.
I'm not supposed to.
Mr. McMahon.
Good evening, board members. I wanted to compliment you. I'm actually really excited at a lot of the discord that is going on with this board. I know a lot of people may call it storming, a lot of people may call it disagreeing, but I think back, I'm not a history teacher, but I like to think of myself as a good student of history included. When you look at the founding fathers, they fought like animals, but we don't remember all of that about when they were discussing the future of our nation. So I want to make it clear that I'm very happy about a lot of the discourse. Now, there was the issue of Dr. Atkins' position as superintendent, and I personally, if I was given the choice between retaining him or letting him go tonight, I would choose the lesser of two evils, letting him go. But I also want to comment that I do appreciate the board member who suggested that you keep him under the condition that he makes the changes that you guys suggest, and I really think that is a nice compromise. And I think right now, with three of you being the people who are trying to spearhead that initiative, you need to find some way to compromise so that you can get at least one of the four other members on your side. Now, I do think that there are members who agree there are things that are going on in this district that do need to change. Whether they think that firing Dr. Atkins immediately is the best or not is a different story, but you need to bridge that gap and create that compromise. I do think that I would like to address Chris Patrica individually, because there is a lot of discussion about how the community feels and how certain individuals only represent a fringe part of that community. But I don't think a lot of the board members would be seated where they are at if it was just a fringe population in the community that felt that way. I think that there is a lot of people who feel similar to how I feel, and even if there's not, I'm more than happy to stand up for what I believe in and what I know to be real. You can say that you don't have all this information showing you that there's any problems, but I would say that's an issue of self-confirmation bias. And I mean, I have evidence, literally hundreds of pages, that are documentation of how I was poorly treated, abused, harassed, and accused of criminal behavior. And I don't think that's any way that anyone should be treated. I don't think Dr. Atkins should be treated that way unfairly. I do believe that we lead by example, so when we try to come up with decisions, try and think of how we can lead with grace and example. Thank you.
Mr. Scott. Followed by Jaclyn Perez, Paige Roush, and Anthony Thomas. Please come to the microphones.
I did notice the prior speaker here interacted with you. Is there any way we can just set rules for everybody, whether they're considered to be friend or foe? I think Betsy kind of stood firm, understanding that you're not supposed to interact, nods or whatever, and affirmation. I think that was improper. It goes to show that we really don't have rules. We have something else, something arbitrary, something capricious, something that just doesn't make sense to the average person. And the average person is more than just four and three. The two board members that I voted for, that I could vote for on this board, had a total of 160,000 votes. The one on this board who has the most influence, most persistence, I forgot that phrase we learned at the Florida School Board Association, is Chris Patrica, and she only got 12,852 votes. The lowest one of everybody on this board, the next lowest one would be Ms. Fisher. Two very important people who are supporting Dr. Atkins. Is that fair? There is a lot more than just a few community agitators in this district. I'd like to talk about Dr. Atkins investigating this board. He had his employee, Andy, whatever his last name is, investigate this board. How backwards is that when an employee would turn his investigator, of which you hire, against his boss? That's insubordination. That requires an investigation against him from an outside source. Tonight, you're going to approve a release for Jamie Michaels, who is the Spelk Union President, who got 59 total votes out of 4,500 people to be in that position, and there is nowhere in the board record of her being an employee since 2014. Nowhere. There was a special position created for her at that time. Since then, there is no record of her even being an employee for you to release her, for her to perform her membership growth. Thank you.
Ms. Perez.
Good evening, board. There's a couple of things that I wanted to speak to you tonight about. One of them is, I'm going to address the board attorney that I had filed an ethics complaint against one of the board members for impersonating an attorney, and I wanted to enter these documents into the records. I'd like him to review that. There is a board member from District 3 that continuously is addressing herself as a previous practicing attorney, as an attorney in New York State, and I have a letter from the New York State Bar that said there's no record of an individual listed as admitted as an attorney to the New York State Bar since 1920 with her maiden and her married name. So I'm entering that into the record. This afternoon also, I'm not sure, totally familiar with Robert's Rules, but I think your meeting was adjourned, and I think that's supposed to be a vote, and it wasn't adjourned, it was just ended. The board stood up, and there was no protocol, and I think that needs to be called to attention also. And now I'm going to move on to the Children and Family Federal Complaint that states that the superintendent gave false information to the school board. When the superintendent was questioned by the State Office of Inspector General, OIG, he withheld information and falsely stated that the Head Start allows them to provide services and make improvements because they have a partnership. In June of 2018, there was a letter that went off to the OIG where the school district specifically stated that they had an agreement with Head Start to use federal grant money to conduct any kind of maintenance for safety reasons, et cetera. In your response that you responded to last week, you specifically stated that the funds were from the state. So you're telling federal investigators, hey, the money's not coming from you guys, it's coming from the state, it's coming from us. But you told the state last year it was coming from the feds. That is reason for concern. In less than 11 months, this district has changed their mind on a very important investigation, and that needs to be looked into. I think there's a conflict of interest that the board attorney is assisting the superintendent when he is mentioned repeatedly on two pages for inappropriate behavior, behavior that you should probably consider hiring an outside investigator to look into these allegations. It's not going to be done internally. And if this is the attorney that's going to represent you, how can he take his conversation and his statements and represent him ethically and give you the information he's giving you? You need an outside investigator. I'm going to enter that complaint. And then I'm going to go on to your, the recent complaint, where I'm just going to read one of these bills for Varsity Lakes from your IAHQ company, technicians trained to perform all aspects of micro...
Speaker's time has expired. Paige Roush is the next speaker.
Thank you and good evening. I'd like to start off by acknowledging the time and the effort that each one of you put in and how exciting it was. I don't often attend school board meetings, so to get to see the best and the brightest and the teachers and both the students tonight, that was an awesome way to start the meeting for me. So thank you. It kind of was a little shot in the arm. And to those students, best wishes in your future endeavors, and I hope that the school system in Lee County has prepared you well for the future. I rise this evening not to cast dispersions upon any member of the board or any of the school board employees. I just rise to bring up the possibility that we might need some outside assistance, whether it would be the process and the procedures for board meetings that somebody brought up, Robert's Rules of Orders. Maybe that that would be something that we should polish ourselves on, or maybe there should be a way to explain to the public that this is the process. Sometimes in life, we get to a point where we assume that... Sometimes in life, we get to a point where we assume that someone already is aware of what the rules are. And maybe bringing in somebody from the outside, in the instance that specifically tonight, to audit and to do an investigation of the discussion about the $3.9 million that's been in the media. I'd like to read something from a meeting that took place, it was at the Florida Auditor General statewide training, which took place the first week of May this year. Participants were very surprised at how quickly they could align with certain groups and overlook relevant information when making decisions. With the onset of groupthink, the goal of the members becomes team harmony and agreement as opposed to fleshing out details or considering other people's opinions. In the interactive exercises that they went through, they saw how quickly at the state level, state auditors, that they could engage in trying to find similar opinions rather than bringing out other points of view. And it almost turned into where you stifle the opinions of those that you don't agree with, and you disregard their opinions. I see that happen quite a bit from home at this board. It's sad, and sometimes, though, it takes somebody to be an agitator, to speak out and to say something about it, and not maybe in an aggressive way to be an agitator, but just to bring up, maybe there's something that we could do better or a different way. And after the process went on at the state auditor's group meeting that they had in training, they came up with three suggestions about how people could do this better at all different levels. One, there needs to be a diverse group of people who have different life experiences, different cultural backgrounds.
Speaker's time has expired. Anthony Thomas is the next speaker.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Anthony Thomas. I'm not an agitator, I'm not suing the school district, I'm not a former disgruntled employee, I've never worked for the district. But I have been around for a long time, since I was 16, I'm now 36. I think I've participated, hopefully, in a productive way in getting the school district to do the right thing. Let me say, we live in a constitutional republic. And one thing about a constitutional republic is that when Congress passes laws and they delegate funds to be spent on a specific things, the president, let's just say the current occupant, if Congress passed money for the Department of Defense, the current president can't say, "Well, Congress won't give me the money to build my wall, so I think I'll go over and raid the Department of Defense budget." It doesn't work that way. So the local legislators have given us money, they've appropriated this funds, they've got these two pots. Now, it's very interesting when I hear the commentary from some of the staff and some of the board members. "Well, just imagine, we got two sets of pots of money, and you got the money to pay your mortgage over here, but instead, you paid your credit card bill over there." No, baby, that ain't how it works. When they told you that this is the way you spend the money, you spend the money that way. Now, Melissa Givinelli, I have to give her credit, she's called for a vote tonight. I think you all ought to do that. I think you ought to move forward with having a vote, because the auditor, first we heard from the auditor, then we heard from the superintendent, they went up to Tallahassee, I spent my own money to go up there, I think I was more convincing than the superintendent. So some of the members of the committee decided to go over to the Department of Education. So first, the inspector general auditor people said that they've misspent the money. Atkins and his group say, "No, we don't think we did." So then, they got their buddies in the Department of Education to say, "We substantiate what you've said, we've come to the agreement that you..." So now, the Department of Education has now said that you've misappropriated the money. You all know how this process works, so there's only one more person who's going to get an opportunity to weigh in. His name is Ron DeSantis. So the Department of Education has said that you've broken the state law, and Ron DeSantis has swore to uphold his oath and to defend and honor the state constitution. Well, you all are not in compliance. So what we heard at the briefing today is very interesting. We hear people say, "Well, listen, yeah, we may have not followed the law, but look at all these wonderful things. We had all these things that we needed to do." It's kind of like a bank robber robbing the bank, and then he goes before the judge and says, "Your Honor, I know I robbed the bank, but look at all these bills I paid." It doesn't matter what you spent the money on. The only thing that matters is that you didn't spend it appropriately. We need to have an outside attorney come in here and do an investigation into the superintendent and into how this money was spent. If we don't do that, I'm afraid what's going to happen is just like years ago when Mayor Fisher and some of our buddies wanted to opt out. Well, the governor, Rick Scott, was getting ready to remove them from office, and I saved them. I think you guys are going to get in a situation here where if you don't take action, Ron DeSantis is going to suspend you from office. Thank you.
Raimi Hall is the next speaker.
Hi. You know, you guys set the tone for the district in so many ways, maybe more than you realize. The way you treat each other, the way you interact with each other, it resonates down. What I saw today in the briefing was concerning, and I'm glad my children didn't see it. I don't think you guys were respectful towards each other. I think some of you were dismissive and rude. The meeting ended abruptly, not following Robert's Rules of Order. You guys can do better than this. I hear you talk a lot about training and activities, so why don't maybe you bring in some thespian troops this summer and give you guys some acting lessons? Maybe it'd be fun, maybe some of you could just learn to pretend to get along up there. I think that's what you do when you really can't do it. Put on a smile, it'll say a lot through the district. I agree with some of the other comments tonight. I don't think the board attorney should be working on the mess the district has with the DOE, I think it's out of his realm. I think you guys need to keep in mind, there's been a lot of comments on social media saying, you know, "The board's responsible for this." Really, you're not. The spending amount that's in question is lower than the amount that requires your approval, okay? You guys didn't approve what happened. I don't think that your board attorney should be working on it. I think this is a district problem. So, let's talk about investigations. I don't think they're handled very well here. Two years ago, when I went to file a complaint against Fort Myers High, the investigator assigned to the case looked me in the eye and told me, "Ms. Hall, investigations don't go well at Fort Myers High." That's sad. You know what I told her? Bring it on. I won't be bullied, and neither will my child. And I say that again to you guys tonight. I have a situation with cheerleading, it has not been addressed. Dr. Atkins, you could have chosen a five-minute conversation with me or my daughter and solved this. Last week, you talk about at a workshop, "Let's hire an outside investigator." You don't need one. I sent you an email today with some comments that the teacher who was hired to coach cheerleading made on social media. I told you I would be reading them tonight, but the more I thought about it, that would be me disparaging a child publicly, and I can't do that. But I think I'll read this one. "These days are different. I can't imagine if my parents ever came into a school and complained, I got in trouble. It was always about me and what I did. My parents never went against a school. Now, parents are friends with children rather than guardians, and they don't teach them right from wrong. Now, it's if someone hurts your feelings or tells you no, parents come in and complain and fix it for you. There's no accountability and no responsibility." A teacher wrote this, she wrote a lot of other things, they've all been deleted. They got deleted after I forwarded them to Madam Chair. I forwarded them to her when I received the comments anonymously after my daughter was the only senior to not make the cheerleading squad. These comments got deleted. Somebody saw a problem with them, somebody handled something, because they're gone. Okay? This issue can be handled-
Speaker's time has expired. That's all the cards that we have. If there's anybody else who has not spoken and didn't fill out a card that wishes to speak, please come, you have three minutes, and give your card to-
I've been watching you all on video. Boy, that's exciting. I even sat through the one that lasted till 10:30. And I kept hearing how the public supports what's happening, and that the only people that are complaining are disgruntled former employees and rabble-rousers. Well, I'm neither. I'm a retired librarian, how safe can you get? And I worked for Lee County for 20-something years before retiring. And I just would like to address a little bit about the follow-up and the way you're handling general auditing. We had auditors all the time from the county, from the clerk's office, and I've heard the fact, "Oh, outside auditors don't understand education." Well, that's, you think outside auditors understand libraries? Not particularly. But that's one of the beauties of auditors, is that they come in with some fresh eyes, you sit down with them, it's your job to explain how you work and maybe why you made some of the choices you made, and it's their job to ask you some hard questions about what makes sense, and, "Well, why'd you do it that way?" And you actually get a chance to talk to each other and work out some solutions. This is the way good government is done, and you don't have to have always an internal auditor. I think sometimes you need somebody from outside with some fresh eyes, maybe somebody who isn't totally in step with what education does. What you're doing is not that different from the real world. And it's a real opportunity, instead of a way to, as the people I know are saying, what you're doing tends to cover up when you are always relying on your internal folks. Yes, you're going to have internal auditors, but you want to be open to the hard questions from the outside, because that's how you learn, that's how you get through problems, and you work out some solutions. I challenge you to do that.
All right, that concludes public comment.
Okay. First of all, thank you to everyone who came and took the time to share your thoughts with us. Mr. Navarro, we will take your suggestions. We are, I believe the superintendent has a group that is working on suggestions for the bus issues, and I will tell you later on in the meeting about my ride-along on the buses the other morning at 5:45, quite interesting. Mr. Matthews, your concerns about class sizes and all, we will, if you forward information to us specifically, then we can get it to the right people to get some answers for you on those things. Several people, before I get to that, Mr. Fox, I'm sorry, and you can't answer me right now, so let's talk afterwards, because I was a little confused about self-initiative. No offense, but I think we are working hard on being more of a team effort, and self-initiative to me came across as each of us having our own ideas, and I don't think that's what you meant, so I'm going to table that conversation, and I would like to hear from you to see what exactly you meant. The, Mr. McMahon, interesting way to put that, complimenting our discord, and it's true, iron sharpens iron. Unless we come up with the different ideas, the main issue with that is learning how to agree to disagree. And hopefully, we can be like our founding fathers and come up with something really wonderful like our country. Okay, Mr. Scott's comment, Ms. Perez, Mr. Thomas, Ms. Roche, is it Roche or Roosh? I'm sorry. And Ms. Mayo. I can address some of the issues that you all have about auditors, internal and external. We have hired a firm, actually because of Florida statute, and we do have a board auditor, not a district. Right now, we have the district internal auditor, but we have hired a firm that will be the board's auditor. And they are beginning their work within the next few weeks. They are not connected with the district in any way, and we will be able to ask them to do, you know, deep dives into certain areas if the board agrees on that. When they start, they are doing, and I know I'm going to mess up the word, what type of an audit?
Risk assessment.
Risk assessment. A risk assessment. So they're going to start with a risk assessment, which is an overall audit, but I'm sure if there's any specific areas, that's why we have them, that they can look into doing that as well. So those of you that are concerned about, you know, kind of co-mingling, this is a separate audit firm that basically just reports to the board, not to any other entity within the district. So that was approved, and if you look back, and I don't remember exactly when it was, but they are starting their process, and we'll have more information about that probably at our next meeting. But that should help answer some of the questions that several of you had about auditors. And if you, I know some of you left your suggestions and ideas with the secretary, and someone will get back to you. If you have questions or suggestions, please make sure you send it to us, and we will make sure that they're followed up, and if they aren't, then you get on us about it. Okay? I think that concludes our public comment, and again, thank you for taking your time to do that. Next on the agenda is consent items. Approval of consent action items. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to the board members seven days prior to the board meeting. We're expected to review the material, and we have the opportunity to speak with the superintendent and ask any questions. And I will remind the public that we are, have instituted in our way of work, an agenda review process. So three days after we receive the agendas, we do meet in a workshop to discuss any questions that we might have, so that when we get to this venue of action, it is an action meeting because we have workshopped it. If there's anything that you see on the agenda and say, "Well, they just, you know, fluffed through that," then go back and look at our workshop and see the discussions that we've had previously. Some of the items have also been briefed or workshop with the board in advance to appearing on the agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items for poll this evening?
I have no polls this evening.
I have none.
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
All right, then we have no polls. So, and Dr. Atkins, do you have any recommendations?
I do have, Madam Chair.
Okay, we are zipping through this.
To approve the consent agenda is in order.
So, can I have a first for the motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Fisher and Ms. Givinelli. And the motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Our next item is board comments and reports, and we'll start with Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. I'm going to be very brief this evening. I had an opportunity to officiate at several graduations over the weekend. It was uplifting, the families were excited, the kids were happy, and I want to congratulate the families and the students, and I want to thank our teachers and staff for all of the work that they did in helping those kids get to this point where they can step into the next phase of their lives. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. And Ms. Givinelli?
I too attended several graduations, and one really stuck out was the South Fort Myers High School graduation. I will tell you that Mr. Matthews knew every student, where they were going, what they were doing. He honored every one of them. I think he hugged more hands than he did handshakes, and he was very inspiring, and it was an honor to be there at all the graduations, but that one was- that one was exceptionally very nice. So I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jay?
Right along with my colleagues here, I also was honored to be a part of three graduation classes this year. And what I really respected and loved was the fact that a lot of the children were receiving a 3.5 and over. That was very impressive for those kids. And they were excited to move on. Some of them wanted to just run off the stage, but it was just really an exciting evening, weekend for me. And then also, in the week prior to that, too, we had the opportunity of going and the children receiving the school present, what was it? I'm sorry. The athlete scholarships from the Rotary Club, South Rotary Club. And those kids were ecstatic about going to school and playing their sports. And, I mean, they already know what, I can't even say half the stuff that they were going to do. And then we also had, I also had an opportunity to go and watch some of the performances. And I'm always speaking about these kids and their performances. The Newsies at North Fort Myers High, the Lion King, Beauty and the Beast. We have such great children in this community, and we really need to appreciate what we have here. And I'm really looking forward to what they become. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Speaking of sports, I have been to, and I apologize, normally I would say these things in the afternoon, but we didn't have time. Florida High School Athletic Association state championships for girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse, boys and girls water polo, and girls flag football. It was awesome. Honest to God and true, I thought I was just a Patriots fan. It turns out I am a football fan. These girls are athletes. They can play. And typically, what happens is you have a star basketball player who has no sport in the spring, and these schools have flag football teams. So it keeps them in shape, keeps them on the court, off the street, out of trouble. It was, I was really, really impressed. And as usual, I was very impressed with the FHSAA staff. The celebrations have been mentioned. I will say State of the Union. I won't repeat what I said to you that morning because it may have contained a word that's not appropriate for public, but I just am blown away by what you guys did, the presentation that you put together. I almost cried. And then there was a second time I almost cried during celebrations, which was my first time at, look at me, she's like, she did. The second time was at adult, adult education graduation? Am I saying that correctly? At Fort Myers High School, where 87 or 89 adults graduated from high school. And it's really hard when, you know, a 63-year-old woman walks across the stage crying and shakes your hand and thanks you for what her accomplishment at that age, it was not hard, but really good. It was a wonderful, wonderful celebration. And finally, I don't know, off the top of my head, the protocol for requesting a briefing subject. Dr. Atkins, at some point over the summer before we head back to school, could we have a briefing on what we're doing for bus stop safety? Please and thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay. Since everyone's talking about graduations, as an at-large member of this school board, I actually went to three of our charter school graduations. And I, the first one that I went to was Florida Southwestern Collegiate High School. And I really learned a lot about what they do there. And one of the things that was very impressive to me was that of the 89 graduates, 70 of them were graduating with their associate's degree. And I learned that many of them, the students that had the associate's degree, had had double graduations. They had just attended the Florida Southwest graduation the day before and were attending their high school graduation. And so let's contrast that with, and of course, they were all ecstatic to be out of high school and, or out of the first two years of college. The next graduation that I went to was our three, three of our alternative charter schools, Coronado, North Nicholas, and Island Park. And those students had, the ones that spoke, all had stories of challenges that they had faced. And, you know, it was held at South Fort Myers High School Auditorium, and that auditorium was packed with well wishers. And it was such an interesting contrast to see these students that did have so many challenges and found a way to forge ahead. So you have to keep in mind that all of these are our kids. Our kids are in the charter schools as well. Since summer break is happening for many of the people in our district, I would like to wish a happy summer break to all of our teachers and support staff that do, will have a couple months off, so to speak. Want to address this in particular to teachers. Teachers, try to find some time to relax and decompress for a few days after the last day of school. Do that before you start maybe summer jobs or professional development training, or work on updating lesson plans, or creating new lesson plans for new preparations that you're going to have, or new grade levels that you're going to be teaching. In between, fitting in all of those appointments, you know, the well-being appointments and the eye doctors and all of that, that you never had time to do during the year. I understand. Unfortunately, I've heard from and talked to too many teachers lately, none of whom were new to their schools, and all of whom had been rated at least effective teachers who were being surplus from their current schools. For those of you who don't realize, that means, in other words, they're, for lack of a better word, outsourced to perhaps other jobs in the district. And outsourced not because they said they wanted a transfer, but because of cutbacks that we have had. I realize that sometimes this is a necessity. However, I think that in some of the cases, and I think the people that talked with me felt that, and not to come down on principles, but there's some principles that may need to take some sensitivity lessons in the way that they present this to their teachers. I think that might behoove them to do that because a lot of these teachers, it just, for them, it kind of came out of the thin air and very, very upset at what had happened. And I know that I've talked with, in my monthly meetings with the teachers' union, and I'm just hoping that in some cases where there seems to be an issue on these teachers, since as an individual board member, I can't do anything about the situations. I can't get involved, although I'd love to, but I can't. I hope that all of these can be resolved and these teachers can find positions that they're happy with at other schools. And so, good luck to all of you and happy, happy summer.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah. I also apologize because we didn't have time this afternoon to cover these topics, and so I'm going to ask the audience's indulgence. Student advisory meeting. I think, having watched this committee grow over the last five years, I can say that they have absolutely taken ownership of that committee. They're brainstorming, generating great ideas. And this last meeting, they had some terrific ideas for expanding student audience outreach. So how do they communicate with their schools? And how do they get information from their schools? And they came up with some great new ideas, so I was, I was very pleased. I went to the Benita Springs High School year-end performance in choir band and orchestra. Now, Benita Springs High School has only been in place two years. It only has freshman and sophomore classes. Very different presentation. First of all, it was in a black box theater. It's a very intimate setting. The focus of these students on their instructor, that they, the self-discipline and their affection for the instructor was just, it was palpable. The students really handled the whole evening. There was no teacher sort of, you know, this is what we're listening to, this is the name of the composer, this is what we're listening to. Students stood up, talked about the composer, talked about the work. And so I walked away thinking, wow, in this music class, these kids are doing research, they're doing writing, and they're doing public speaking. And I think that's really cool. A third of that school is involved in the music program because the principal or the music instructors said to the principal, I don't care if they have an instrument, I don't care if they've never sung before, sign them up for my class. And I got to tell you, Ms. Patricca was there. We were blown away by the new band and by the orchestral and the band orchestra performance. It's absolutely blown away. The professionalism of these kids, the quality of the music produced was, I mean, just overwhelming.
I sang the National Anthem. I honestly thought it was angels singing it.
Yeah. Yeah. It was so good. Anyway, yeah, it was great. And then I went to see Glow, which was the Harns Marsh Middle School dance and choral recital. Now, they are in, this was their first program, but they're in the second year of a grant. And forgive me, Dr. Atkins, but I can't remember the kind of grant, but I know it's for middle schools, and it's a music and art grant. Anyway, this was their first program. These kids were so into it. You know, I've been to a lot of the performances that are done at the different schools where they've always had a music program, and it's very professional, and everybody gets up and they do their thing, and they're very proud and excited. But the joy these kids had being on that stage, being on the stage with their friends was, was just, oh, it was overwhelming. So I know that the grant will expire in another year. I know that the school will be challenged, these schools will be challenged to find ways to continue these programs. But clearly, in this one school anyway, these grant dollars are making a huge difference in getting kids engaged and excited. Okay. Sorry to make this so long. Continuing systemic improvement advisory committee met last night. Couple of comments, just throwing them out. There is no district policy on pay-to-play because Florida does not require it, as do other states. So parents want to know where to learn about who is funding and how funding is being provided when students have an inability to pay to participate in extracurricular activities. So that's sports, that's class trips, whatever. Again, they brought up the taping of meetings. They said there needs to be a policy, and the policy needs to address public tapings of meetings as well. In other words, when a member of the public comes in and uses their cellphone to tape the proceeding of the meeting, there needs to be, they feel, these committee members feel there needs to be a policy. Since YouTube content is not owned by the district, how do we protect those who have been, whose meetings are going up on YouTube? They want to know if there's a policy for protecting meeting participants, community members and staff. Will employees be covered by whistleblower protections? Communications, Lauren's not, oh, yes, there she is. So we had a good conversation about communications because I think they see the same thing you see. There isn't consistency of content across the schools. Parents are struggling not only to toggle from one school to another and find consistent In some schools, they're looking for links, but they're trying to find things like school policy, and there are no links to, from the schools to district, to important district information. So I, we had a good conversation about the fact that Lauren is working hard on creating a process for that. Their, the CSI interests for the coming year, they want to know how the school safety and security measures will be tracked and how we will know they are successful. They want to know how the health, the new health services process and programs are being implemented and how they're being evaluated for effectiveness. And they're also looking for the board to suggest topics for them to consider for next year. And we, Cindy McClung and I did mention that we will be having a board workshop on advisory committee meetings. So those are my comments for this evening. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you. And they are, we are going just a little bit longer on comments because we didn't get to them this afternoon. I've got a couple of pictures that, that's not it. That's, oh, okay. This is a group of students from Lehigh Acre's Middle, that, from the Scholars Club, and they did a leadership day. And they came to visit the school board, and they wanted to know what was it like to be on the school board. It was really fun. They got to sit in the board member's seats, and we worked on passing a motion and using Robert's Rules of Order and all that. So that was a lot of fun. And thank you to Mr. Bethay for bringing them. This, go ahead to the next one. The next one is Alva Band Concert. I'm telling you, I tapped my foot and clapped my hands the whole time. It was awesome. The sad part at the end, Mr. Houchen announced that their band director that had been there for four years is moving back up north. So I'm putting out the cry for Mr. Houchen. I told him I would. He's looking for a band director. And I'm sure he'll find someone good, but this gentleman was awesome, very good. Today, this is the Gateway Leadership Day, and I had to take a picture in front of the lighthouse. What can I say? It was, it was really good. That's why I got my synergy comment in the beginning. And having been an avid coordinator and taught Seven Habits, I think every class has a dance and a song to the Seven Habits. But the one that's universal is sharpen the saw. So I was able to join in the dance with that part. Okay. Go ahead. And I did a bus ride-along, and I was on bus 1704. Yes, thank you. I was on bus 1704 with Mr. Roberto Lazo. Mr. Lazo has been a bus driver for 17 years. I see heads nodding. Anybody know Mr. Lazo out there? He has been driving the bus for 17 years, and he drove bus down in Palm Beach County as well, and he's up here with us. And I wanted to see what it was like, so we rode around in Lehigh. We left the bus barn at, just before 6:00. And Mr. Lloyd rode with us. And if you're really interested to see all that I learned, I did Facebook Live. Please don't blame me for my camera work, but you can hear what we're talking about. Very interesting facts that we learned. We left the barn on Leonard just at about 6:00. We didn't pick up the first student on Columbus and 82 until 6:30. That just gives you an idea how far spread out. By seven, I think we had like four kids on the bus. It's a fascinating project to do, to see all the things that happen. One of the highlights, it was funny, Mr. Lazo said, when, he stops at every stop, and they have to wait like nine, 10 seconds with the door open, whether the kids are there or not. I said, oh, the middle and high school kids must hate you because they're going to say, oh, the bus never came. It's logged into their system that he stopped there for 10 seconds. So, you know, sorry, kids, but you lost on that one. And we went, picked up about 20 kids or so and went to G. Weaver Hips. It was a fascinating time. And check on my Facebook to hear some of the facts. And that was Mr. Lazo there, too. Is there another one? Is that it? That's it? Okay. Graduations, I have to say. The first one, I was wondering if I was going to get through it. It was Lehigh Senior. And my first comment was that a little over 10 years ago, I was one of the teachers leading the kids into graduation for Lehigh Senior High School. And it was, it was just very, very good. I did Lehigh Senior, Riverdale, and East. And East, I worked there for five years as well, so I got to say, once a jag, always a jag. But one of the highlights of the But one of the highlights of the graduation was Buckingham Exceptional School. If you ever have a down day where you think, you know, woe is me, the world is on me, go visit Buckingham Exceptional School. The saddest part to me was that some of, I think five of the kids that graduated were aging out. They were at 22. One child had been there since he was four years old. But at 22, there's, no longer can they attend that school. And the parents, the, the angst and the tears and all, because now what do you do? Because they have to have somewhere to take care of them. So, that was really interesting. I spoke at a National Association of Hispanic Realtors and they are a fabulous group. If you see them anywhere that they're having an event, they are so community-minded. They do housing seminars and help out with the schools and all that. An excellent, excellent group. I visited Nissel Training with Dr. Carlin and Doug Whitaker. And board members, if you ever get an opportunity, visit Nissel Training to see what our APs and principals are learning about leadership and how to run their schools. The North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts, and this was funny. I went out there to see Newsies and I know the superintendent went as well. But I was driving through downtown Fort Myers and there was a sign up by the Rep Theater and it said, Newsies. I'm like, I didn't know they were doing it here. I thought it was at North Fort Myers. Well, come to find out, the same play was being done by a group of students downtown. North Fort Myers was better, I'm sure. They were awesome. The synergy that I talked about in the beginning and us getting to the point where we can agree to disagree. We're having a training on the 31st that will cover, you know, cultural sensitivities and team building and things that we need to help us to be a better board. That kind of addresses some things you guys were talking about. As far as the transparency, kudos to Ms. Desmore and the superintendent. I asked Ms. Desmore on Sunday, we were talking about this issue with the, the audit and everything that was out in the paper. And then, I discussed it with her and, and Dr. Atkins again on Monday. And I suggested that we have a document that has all of our audits and things that are going on and just an ongoing document so that the board members can just look on there and see, okay, where are we with this? And like I said, kudos to them. Within two days, we had that document for the briefing today. Thank you so much. That's why we're glad that you're back to get those things done. I think that that's going to help us with our transparency and knowing where we're at. And just an example is, once we do a response to DOE, there's a time period, we don't know when they're going to answer. But if we look on the list and we say, okay, the last thing was, we submitted this on this day and we're waiting for DOE, DOE answer, then there's not this surprise like DOE just sent something. They didn't just send something. It was in response to what we had sent in and there's a process. So, we are learning about that process. We are able to view it. We're going to make it a Google Doc that we can get into and look at. These are some of the things we're doing to help our way of work and help us work smoother. I wanted to bring up the pluses and deltas. And I'm not sure how to, just to bring up the fact that we had said we would try it for six months. And I think we just did it on consensus. So, it's a process. And parliamentarian, can you tell me how I can address that?
Well, I think if somebody wants to move to continue with the, with the pluses and deltas practice, that could be done. Otherwise, it, I, I think as you explained, your, your pilot program has expired. So, you can, you know, there's no, there's no requirement to continue doing it.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion or, so that we can at least have discussion?
I don't think we have to make a motion.
Yeah, we've never voted on that.
You don't have to make a motion, is that what you said?
No, I mean, it, it has expired, so you can discontinue the practice as of now.
Right. And as far as getting consensus, do we just do consensus rather than?
Yeah, I mean, I think that you can ask, that you can pull the other board members if they wish to continue the practice.
Okay. So, for sake of time, all those with thumbs up that would like to continue doing the pluses and deltas or not sure or no? So, let's take consensus.
Looks like you have three neutrals and four against.
Okay. So, it looks like we will, at this time, not continue it. If a board member has a suggestion as to how, moving forward in our way of work, how we can gather and glean that same type of information, I'm sure we're all open to do that. And that being said, Mr. Bierman?
Thank you. I just wanted to-
I'm sorry. Did I miss somebody?
She had a finger.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, if, if I may, I know that you were sharing some information and I totally forgot about what took place today when you said the Buckingham Exceptional. And I'm sorry, it'll take two seconds. Today, we were at the Buckingham Exceptional Center. We had the Attorney General came down to, to present an award to Deputy Donna, who is out there, of course, is our SRO out there. And she seen the need for hunger from, from the school. So, she does provide, she opened up a little store in her office. And with the little store, it's got little buttons for those who are, are non-verbal. She'll show them the product if they want it or they don't want it. They push the yes or the no. They know what they like and they know, and they're actually choosing food to take home for family as well. And I just thought that was really great. And then, this one right here, this little, I think, I believe it was Wesley.
Wesley.
He just, I don't know, he's around six years old and he just ran over there and jumped up. He didn't have a choice. It's like, you are picking me up. I just thought it was a, a great honor for Lee County to have the eternal, the Attorney General come here and present this award. And that's her office that she turned into a little grocery store. And I'm, thank you for allowing me to share that. I just, I thought that was really great that they did that.
That's wonderful. That was important. Mr. Bierman?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment briefly on some, some of the speakers stated that there was an, an error in the formal application of Robert's Rules of Order. And I agree that the proper way under Robert's Rules of Order is to take a motion to adjourn. I am not a believer in, in following Robert's Rules of Order very strictly to the, to the detriment of having a flowing meeting. And generally, whoever's chairing the meeting, if the person says, you know, we're adjourning, unless someone objects, I feel that that's a, essentially a motion by acclamation. But if you prefer to have a more formal system and you want me to interrupt and say you need a motion to adjourn, I will do that as the parliamentarian. And it's, it's up to the board as to how strictly you want the, the parliamentary procedure enforced.
Comments from the board members?
I just think we need to be consistent.
I'm sorry, Ms. Morgan.
Well, consistently, we haven't done it.
Right.
For briefing. Any, any non-cons, any non-voting meeting, we've simply adjourned.
I don't know, how, how do you make a motion and take a vote at a non-action meeting?
Well, a non-action meeting is, you don't take action on substantive things, but you can have procedural votes. So, for example, somebody could raise a point of order and the chair could make a ruling on the point of order and then the ruling could be appealed. I mean, you have those sort of procedural things. But, but typically, you know, I am in favor of allowing the board to choose the level of formality and strictness that it, that works for that board. And so, typically, that means allowing the chair to essentially run the meeting as the chair sees fit. And unless there is objection to something that the chair has, has done in terms of even moving an item out of order or something like that, I don't see the need for a formal motion and vote on all of those. However, this is your board and whatever works best for your board is, is the way that you should do it. But I did want to respond to that because a couple of speakers raised that and, and, you know, as if that was, at, at worst, it's a very minor departure from Roberts, but I did want to say something about it.
Are there comments, Ms. Lauren?
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with doing it informally, the way we've, we've been doing it. But I, I would just say that in particular today, and I realize we're under a time crunch, but today's, today's meeting was rather abrupt in its ending. And perhaps instead of doing, you know, motions and that sort of thing, the chair could just say, is there anybody that has something else to say? Or, or just in, in, in some way, because I know I was caught really short on, on something that had been said earlier, but I didn't want to force any issues because of, of the time restraint. So, sometimes we're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place in terms of the time crunch. And, you know, the only solution to that is, it seems like we're often in a time crunch for many of these, you know, the, the action meetings at night, we, we've been here till, what was it, 10:30? But, you know, to me, it's, it's better to start a little earlier and have some extra time for us to grab a quick break, to get a bite to eat, rather than to be caught in a time crunch. So, we might want to kind of, moving forward, evaluate, do we need to start even like 30 minutes earlier to give that? Just a suggestion.
Other comments on that? And I, I do have a comment. Since we moved to the new agenda process, we've been trying to, some board members wanted us to have less time in between the meetings, but I've heard from several people that we do need a little break in between. So, it's kind of, we're, we're trying this out and we'll see how we can accommodate everyone's needs and I work with staff to make sure that everyone has at least some say-so in how we do it. But we were trying to condense the time of not being here at 2:00 and then having a big break. But we may need to have some break and move stuff up. So, we'll, we'll discuss how we can do that. Okay? Mr. Bierman, is that all?
That's all for me.
Okay. Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of real quick items. What, there was something that came up today regarding Success Academy and some training. So, Lori Brooks had just sent an email about the specialized training for staff at, at Success Academy. She said, all staff, instructional and support at Success Academy are being trained in youth mental health first aid through our SA, SAM-HSA grant. Training commenced this year and will continue next year until all staff is trained. They're also committed to offering onboarding training for new staff beyond the three-year grant cycle, which expires September 2021. Also, Ms. Brooks and her team have been collaborating with Salus Care, contracted staff to develop and implement trauma-sensitive schools training. Next year, for all Success Academy staff, initial training will be during the preschool week and ongoing training via PLC times throughout the school year. And said, Mr. Bowens has been outstanding in support of these efforts as the, as the wonderful school principal at that particular school. And then, finally, and I will be sending this to you, but Lee Hughes sent me the results from the International Science and Engineering Fair. And a couple of different things, you know, I know the state of the school, I'd mentioned there were three students, those are like three of our, our traditional school students, but there were, we had seven overall students from Lee County that were there. So, I want to talk about the, the results of everybody that was there. We had seven at the Intel ISEF finalists, competed against approximately 1,800 high school students from more than 80 countries, regions, territories, and received five awards, including the following. We had three special awards. The American Statistical Association, ASA, second award of $1,000 for Dahlia Dry, Fort Myers High School. We had the National Aeronautics and Space Administration, NASA, honorable mention from Morgan Barkhurst of Florida Southwestern Collegiate High School. And the National Ocean and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, second award of $500 to Mark Leone of Astero High School. We also had two category awards. Microbiology, second award of $1,500 to Luke Long of Canterbury School. And Physics and Astronomy, first award of $3,000 to Dahlia Dry, Fort Myers High School. I want to work on a press release and get that out, but I just wanted to bring that up this evening.
Dr. Atkins, have you seen or listened to her podcast?
I, yes, yes.
I shouldn't put you on the spot and ask you that.
No, yes, no, it was pretty amazing.
But if you haven't, for a young woman who's as smart as she is, she's incredibly relatable and just, she doesn't come across as being as smart as she is. Does that make sense?
And remember, she was also an award winner last year.
Yes, she was. Dahlia Dry. Dahlia Die. Dry.
One, is that, is that all you have? Okay. I failed to mention something about one of the speakers when Ms. Hall spoke. And I had a, a point to ask where we are on the follow-up with that. Dr. Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Just for the record, can you address it?
Yes. As I had indicated to, to the board and Ms. Hall, we had, the reason why we really wanted to do, go the direction we did is we were looking at some of the complaints that had come in and who they were addressed to. We just really felt that there was some potential for conflict of interest. And we do have external counsel, which Mr. Williams suggested. So, he has been in contact with that office and I, and has been talking to that office about the steps that they're going to be taking. And my understanding is that she will be, the parents of, of that student will be hearing from that group this week.
Okay. And was she informed of that?
Yes. I sent her an email. She did respond to me on, I sent her an email on Friday and she responded to me on Friday.
Okay. Just so that we keep up with the correspondence. Okay, I think that's it. Our next, on Thursday, May the 30th will be a board workshop at 2:00. And at this point, having no other business to come before this body, may entertain, will someone entertain a motion to adjourn? We'll move, okay. Ms. Fisher and Ms. Juvenel, you make it easy. Please, are we recording our vote? Please record your vote. And thank you to all of you that came and participated with us. And it is unanimous, so we are adjourned. Thank you.